... meeting, March 24, 2015, to order. And Mr. Lee has a prayer to offer.
Bow your head. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the promise of springtime, the hope of renewal and growth. And just like the spring, we ask this for our village. Please give the members of this council the strength of character and knowledge to serve the citizens of this village to the best of our abilities to make decisions for the benefit of all. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, role?
Brokaw?
Here.
Dries?
Halter?
Here.
Hermes?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Walther?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
And then Mr. Dries has an excused absence, and also our manager, Yvonne Kovak. All right. Approval of minutes of the February 24 regular council meeting.
Can I have a correction to the agenda first?
Okay.
Without objection, I request the removal of ordinance number 2015-01-F as final numbers are not yet available.
Second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Passes. Okay. Now approval of minutes of the February 24 regular council meeting, and that's it.
I move to approve the minutes?
Second. So moved. Minutes approved. All right. This is the time for residents to comment on matters before council or ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the lectern, give your name and address, then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcript -- transcription. Comments are limited to two minutes. Anybody?
Say that five times real fast.
Okay. Seeing no one. Reports of village officials, municipal manager Yvonne Kovak, and I'll report a couple things that I know she's talking about. The pool will be opening coming up soon, and so there was an ad, I think, in the Journal about the swimming pool opens May 23. You can get your applications online at greenhillsohio.us or at the Green Hills Municipal Building. And I know she also had something, I think, in the Journal about leaf collection starting in April, but I forget the two days or the two weeks that the leaf collection is going on, but that's also in the Journal. So check your Journal for that. And then she's still working on getting a date for having Arbor Day for the village. And--
Come in.
And also Barrett paving has started construction on Winton Road.
That's the collection date.
Okay. Yes. Spring leaf collection will be April 13 to the 17. And so rake your leaves out to the curb. If they're blocked by cars, they may not be able to get them. And as always, you can bag your leaves and Rumpy will take them.
Thirteen through the 17.
Correct. And anyway, they're repairing the catch basins now, and they'll do full depth base repairs. And they're scheduled to be complete by May 15 for that section of Winton from Cromwell, Farragut, to the corp -- south to the corporate lines. And I think also the section across from the shopping center, we're working with this contractor to have them plane portion there where it's all breaking up and the drainage is real bad and resurface that area.
So is that going to be resurfaced at that time? They're just working on--
You mean that bad spot? Well--
No, I mean resurfacing everything. What is that happening from Sharon all the way to the--
Oh, well, we've already done the Sharon to Damon.
Yeah, okay. So from Damon until--
So she's still going to work to try to get a grant to do from Damon down to Cromwell.
Gotcha.
But we're just going to repair that bad spot right now because it won't make it through another winter--
Right.
--the way it's falling apart.
All right. So Cromwell's a--
Cromwell--
It's going to be repaid from Cromwell to the Springfield Township?
Right.
Okay. Gotcha.
And then hopefully the county will do something with Winton Road down to the Y or past the Y, I guess, down to St. Bart's that needs to be resurfaced. Law Director Jeff Forbes, anything?
Just my usual update on the municipal income tax uniformity bill or law now. Just want to let you know, you may have seen this in Ohio Municipal League Legislative Bulletin, that the Municipal League is going to be undertaking a pretty in-depth analysis of that entire law with the intent of trying to draft basically like a model ordinance that municipalities would be able to adopt to make sure that you're doing everything in compliance with the new law. I've been in touch with the Municipal League. I think they anticipate having that sometime in July, probably the beginning of July, make it available for us to see and be able to take steps after that.
Okay. All right. Clerk of Council Catherine Lives.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution numbers 2015-09-F, 10F, 11F, 12F, and 15 and 13TNS were posted as required. The March 15 community calendar and notice of the council retreat of March 8, 2015, and the rescheduled recreation committee meeting were also posted as required. And notice of the planning commission and board of zoning appeals meetings on March 10, 2015, and cancellation of the work session meeting of March 10, 15 were posted as required. And I recently attended, actually on March 13, the Ohio Association of Parliamentarians' annual session in Cleveland, Ohio. A very brief business meeting was held, and the remainder of the day was dedicated to education, a very good opportunity to learn more about parliamentary procedure. And just to make you aware, I will be on vacation from March 31 to April 7. And if there are no questions, that would conclude my report.
All right. Chief of Police Neil Fardell.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things we worked on was providing some information and taking a look at a complaint that the mayor received regarding an accident that had happened last year on Damon Road where a stuck accelerator caused a vehicle to crash into a garage there. We found that there were four other accidents on Damon Road in the last several years. The other crashes, one was a side swipe, two were collisions with a parked vehicle. One was at the intersection up at Damon and Winton. One of those was a hit and run, another involved an intoxicated driver who was arrested. In comparison during that same timeframe, we had 82 reported accidents elsewhere in the village. Also during that timeframe, our officers issued 1,466 moving violations. In response to the complaint on Damon, our officers have issued 23 traffic citations since the resident first rode to the village in May of last year. We also completed the below 100 training that involved all of our officers. That was started in January and concluded this month. The training is aimed at keeping our citizens safer by promoting officer safety and safer habits for officers to keep the number of officer deaths below 100 for an annual period. Training was conducted in Blue Ash by officers from the Ohio State Patrol and locally from the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office. All of our officers attended, and it was excellent training. As a result of your approval last month, the municipal manager signed a collection agreement with the Ohio Attorney General's Local Government Debt Collection Program. That will allow us to participate in that program and we believe give a greater return on the collection of our fines, and we're waiting on their approval and signature at this point in time. We submitted this month our annual report to the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies verifying our continuing compliance with the standards that they've developed. Work continues right now on revisions to our policy manual and updating our procedures, and the first portion of that manual has been completed, and we're continuing our work on that. During the month of February, we investigated five accidents. That's up from two of the same period last year. Two crimes, 236 other incidents. We had 655 contacts with residents. 181 of those were dispatched by the communications center, and 474 were self-initiated by our officers. We provided assistance to the public in 101 instances. We assisted other agencies 51 times, and we made 44 criminal arrests and 81 traffic arrests.
Any questions, comments? Fire Chief Anthony Spade.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly tonight, statistics through the end of February, since March is not completed yet, we've answered 115 emergency runs. That is versus 142 for the same time period last year, so we're down about 27 runs. Just a reminder that springtime is tornado season, so it's a good time to remind everyone to be prepared. Water, flashlights, batteries, those kinds of things. There's some great resource information on the website, ready.gov. And just understand and know that we have a very good disaster plan within the Village of Green Hills that involves all of our resources as well as our mutual aid companies. However, just a reminder that if a tornado or something significant does come through town, that our resources will be quickly depleted and be very thin. So the reminder to be prepared is very, very important because we will get to you, but we will have to prioritize emergencies and do the best we can with the resources that we do have. Part of our disaster plan is that we do have shelters throughout the village, and it takes time to get those open. So got a good plan. Hopefully we'll never have to use it, but if it does happen, we do have that in place. And again, self-preparedness, the ability to self-rescue, those kinds of things become very, very important because our resources do become scarce, you know, especially if something very, very big happens. And just want to remind everybody that the Easter egg hunt is Easter Sunday, April 5, at 2:00 p.m. Please be on time because if you're five minutes late, you miss it.
If you're three minutes late--
It's kind of like a wedding. Everybody kind of shows up about five minutes before it starts, and then it's over in five minutes. So but it's a great tradition here in the Village of Green Hills. Fire Department's been doing it probably since day one. We put about 2,000 eggs out there on the commons, and it's a great time. So hopefully the weather will cooperate with us, and we'll have a great day. And just remind everyone to be safe out there.
Need any help from us for the Easter Sunday?
Mark the shape.
Okay.
If we have four or five inches of snow, it's easier to hide the eggs, you know.
That's right. We actually have had snow on Easter Sunday a couple of times, so hopefully that won't happen.
Well, we've had--
That's all I have, sir.
Okay. Thanks. All right. Mayor's report. I have audited court receipts, and we have a new form now. And so I talked to Matt because when I first looked at it, he had -- I had the same reaction that he did. Maybe there was an error in the report because it was new, but it's a good report. And so the county got $121 from us. The state got $3,579. End of the village was $16,113.56.
Wow.
So some people have been working. Very good on that. And I did a proclamation and had hoped to attend this Martin Luther High School Symphony Band over at the Lutheran Church here, but then wasn't able to make it. But I'll read the proclamation I did for them. Glendale, Wisconsin, Green Hills, Ohio, along with Greenbelt, Maryland, share a historic origin, a Spartan beginning, and a pioneer spirit. Whereas music is a universal language, an uplifting reminder of our connections to each other and a joyous noise. And whereas the Martin Luther Symphonic Band of Greendale, Wisconsin, has chosen to share their musical talent with Green Hills, Ohio, I therefore, David Moore, Mayor of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, do hereby claim Friday, March 20, as Martin Luther High School Symphonic Band Day. And so that was read to them. And actually, I think two of my Catharines, so Catherine helped type it up, and Catherine Brokaw helped write that since she's musically inclined, more so than me. And that's all I have. Committee reports, traffic and safety, Brokaw.
We met yesterday. We discussed some of the old business, and of course, both of them are sitting here, so a lot of the stuff we talked about, they've addressed today. One thing, in the fire, the EMT refresher course will be done by the end of April, so congratulations to the fire department for that. And Chief Spade did say that the staffing is improving, so I'm happy about the volunteers and wanted to congratulate him on that. And then the police, we talked about working on the general orders and just kept up to date on pretty much the stuff he has in his report. So any other questions, let me know. We will meet again April 27 at 4:30.
I just have a question there. Several times, and this morning happened to be one of them, we had the blinking lights on the stop signs. I don't know if that's a recurring problem that we have. I did call in because it was in the rush hour traffic, it was 6:30 or 6:35, something like that.
And it was still happening about 7:30 when I left for work, but it looked like the cruisers were out, so and I believe an ambulance, a fire engine was out.
It was an auto accident this morning at Winton right around that time.
It was an auto accident. That's when I saw the emergency vehicles, that was my guess.
And I know Yvonne is working on the light situation. We're having some difficulties with Duke. There's some sort of problem causing the drop in the electric voltage and causing the lights to kick on to that system. And there, the last I heard when I talked to her a couple weeks ago was they're trying to get us to do something, and we don't, and according to our traffic light people, maintenance people that work on it, not Duke, they're claiming that we don't need to do that, that the problem's on their side. So evidently, it's still not resolved then because they went onto that phase this morning.
It takes turns. Sometimes it's the one down in the A section, sometimes it's in the Cromwell section, sometimes it's in the Damon--
Right.
And then sometimes it's all three of them.
Right.
And you know, no particular storm caused it or anything like that, so I just--
It's power surges in the line.
Yeah. And it has something to do, I think, when they're switching from--
The sensor to the timed?
Something related to the commercial line or something. I don't know if it's usage at the center. I don't really understand, but maybe Yvonne can explain that at the next meeting.
Mayor, I did get an update on that today after it went out again this morning because we talked about it in our committee meeting last night. It hadn't gone out recently until this morning. Elux has apparently has a box that can be installed, but I think they're waiting on Duke for something. And we're still waiting, and we're waiting. If anyone has any connections with Duke, that's what the holdup is. So apparently, even though the fluctuations, we believe, are in their lines, we have to pay to install this device to figure out where it is. But we're waiting to get it installed, and certainly the sooner the better.
Okay. All right. And finance and audit, do you want to cover for Mr. Dries?
There's no report at this time.
Oh, okay. All right. Recreation cable TV, Mr. Hermes.
Wow, that's me. Thank you. I have no report right now. I know the Recreation Commission is beating on the 26th, which is Thursday, at 7:00, and probably have something for you next month. Thanks.
And you'll have a motion later?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I'm going to do a dance motion.
All right. Intergovernmental Affairs, laws and rules, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Later on, we'll be taking up a first reading of an ordinance that came as a result of our last Rules and Laws Committee meeting. The meeting that was scheduled originally for the 23rd of this month was canceled, and we'll take up the remaining issues concerning employee manual changes as well as the discussion of the current status on medical marijuana facilities or banning of such facilities in the village on our next meeting, which is April 27 at 10:00 a.m. That works with you, Maria?
Yes, sir.
Okay. April 27, 10:00 a.m. That's all I have right now, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Services Streets, Ms. Walter.
I have some updates. We are still waiting for the confirmation for the funding for the truck. So until we hear anything about that, the truck is not happening for us, for the service department. Another matter has come up to our attention is the paint that is failing on the service building, the one we did last summer. The work was guaranteed, so the vendor will be addressing the matter once it warms up. They cannot do anything right now. The pre-construction meeting for the Winton Road project, the work will start within the next two weeks. I went yesterday to the Historical Society meeting, and they are going to try to reach out to you because May is the particular month for historical societies happening in the area and so forth, and they want to plan some activities and perhaps ask some input from you and proclamation of some sort for that reason also. And I didn't have the time to mention when you were the village manager at the beginning of the meeting here, but I will need to find out somehow when the Arbor Day is. I have a tree for you, and it will be delivered three days prior to that date, so nothing happens to the tree will be taken care of until then, but it will be delivered here for that particular event.
Okay.
And whenever you find that out, that would be great if we can--
Great.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right.
And that concludes my report. My next meeting will be the same day as the laws and rules, but it will be at 9:00 for Street and Services.
Okay. Community Development, Mr. Halter.
Yes, I just want to mention the catch event that we've supported before in conjunction with the -- actually, they'll be, we're going to post it on the website, but there's two baseball games that are available to, you know, to the citizens, and that is on April, April 25th, Saturday, April 25th, the Cubs versus the Reds. And the other date was May 30th, I think it's the Washington Nationals versus the Reds. We'll be getting the banner out and seeing if, you know, anybody in our community is interested in supporting these, you know, this effort. That concludes my report at this point.
Okay.
Mr.--
No question.
I just also wanted to add on that, that they called me to ask for the email address for the newspaper, for the Green Hills Journal, to be able to advertise that as well. And I just happen to have one of the newspapers, and I give the editors whatever email address and also the circulation one, so they can send it to both of them to put it on the next newspaper, the Green Hills Journal as well.
Good. All right. Okay, moving on to unfinished business. We have resolution number 2015-04-F. Resolution confirming the level of control for the annual appropriations. This resolution was postponed to the March 10 work session meeting, which was canceled. And so in talking with the clerk, we have several options. We can act on this resolution now. We can -- what were the other options? Table it?
You can postpone it indefinitely. You can postpone it definitely, or you can refer it to a committee.
So--
Or act on it.
Or you can act on it, of course.
Or we can act on it. So do we have any comments as to--
At this time, discussion is in order.
I thought this was consistent with the auditor's manual. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And I don't see a reason not to do it if they've thought through it and put it in their manual, but that's, that would be my take on it.
All right.
My findings was that there was a technical bulletin issue, and I had done the research on this and saying that certain things were still lacking on it. So that's the reason I probably would be voting no on that.
And where was the, what was the source of the technical bulletin?
The source was the state auditor's website. It was the technical bulletin number 97-010.
That's the one you had passed out.
That's the one I gave you the reference to. I had the call from this gentleman from the auditor's office, and we discussed that, and my information via phone from him was that it needed to have some more additional information on the categories underneath it, that it was not complete enough. And for that reason, it requested additional language, let's put it that way, and for that reason, I'm still ambivalent about that, and I probably would vote no.
Sure. And coming from the auditor's office, do they have plans to incorporate those changes? Do you know?
No, I don't know. I have nothing else with--
I'm just not sure. I'm not familiar with when it says a technical bulletin, what that, what that means. I don't know if that's a--
I gave a copy of that--
No, I know, I realize that, but I just wasn't sure about, I didn't know what the context was, whether that was something they were planning on changing. And I'm asking, I don't know.
And both Yvonne and Matt had already received copies of that from the auditor's office.
Okay.
I guess, I guess if they are following those guidelines and the ordinance is simply highlighting those guidelines, why do we need to interject specifically all that additional language into this, into this resolution?
Well, I'm just stating my objections that I go in guidelines with information I have.
Kathy Lives, out of the five people that are here, we just need four out of the five, right? If we vote on it?
Correct. Majority.
Sounds good.
I'm in favor of proceeding with, with resolution. I don't, I don't see quite the same level of objection to it based upon what the auditor has and hasn't said at this point. I'm greatly pleased with the additional financial information that Matt Sanders is sending out each month. I think that gives each and every council member, as well as the mayor, a lot more information about, about where we stand. And I appreciate that, and I think that that goes a long way to resolve any concerns that this resolution may raise.
We have read this resolution in entirety--
Yes.
--a while back. All right. Well--
I am ready to move on it as well.
All right.
I think all my--
Call for a vote?
Questions have been answered. Brokaw?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walther?
No.
Resolution number 2015-04-F. Resolution confirming the level of control for the annual appropriations passes. Next item is ordinance 2015-02-F. An ordinance providing for the issuance of unlimited tax redevelopment general obligation refunding bonds in a principal amount not to exceed 615,000 by the Village of Green Hills, Ohio for the purpose of refunding the previously issued unlimited tax redevelopment general obligation bonds, Series 2005, and declaring an emergency. And since Mr. Dries isn't here, Ms. Brokaw.
Well, I move to suspend the rules requiring reading the ordinance in full and to read for the first time by title only.
Okay. Do we, we don't vote on that? Do we, we don't vote on that, right? Or do we have to vote on suspending, reading it two times? Yes. Okay. In its entirety. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion, any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Okay, first reading of Ordinance Number...
2015...
2015-02-F, which the mayor has already done, but I will read it again. An ordinance providing for the issuance of unlimited tax redevelopment general obligation refunding bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $615,000 by the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, for the purpose of refunding the previously issued unlimited tax redevelopment general obligation bonds, Series 2005. And I will stop there.
Okay. All right. Next ordinance is 2015-03-LNR, ordinance authorizing the village clerk to forward to the Green Hills Planning Commission proposed amendments to the Green Hills zoning code for review and recommendation. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too move to suspend the rules in reading the ordinance in full and to read for the first time by title only.
Second.
Been moved in second. To suspend reading the ordinance in its entirety, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, ordinance or motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, this is Ordinance Number 2015-03-LNR, ordinance authorizing the village clerk to forward the Green Hills Planning Commission proposed amendments to the Green Hills zoning code for review and recommendation.
Okay. All right, Mr. Hermes?
Yes. I'd like to make, yeah, I'd like to make a motion. There's a couple of, on the community programming board, there's a couple of folks from Forest Park as well as one here from Green Hills. They want to re-up their time, which is a three-year term. So I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Jonathan Palmer, which he just was put on not too long ago, just kind of taken the place of somebody until it was over. So Jonathan Palmer will, and to concur with the City of Forest Park's reappointments of Rhonda Hobbs and also Jamie McCarter, to the Community Programming Board, Regional Council of Governments, and the CPB Holdings Incorporated Board, all for the terms expiring March 31st, 2018. So we just have to make, I'm making the motion just to concur that it's going to be okay.
Do we have to second that?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Calendar?
The traffic and safety meeting will be Monday, April 27th at 4:30.
Street and Services, April 27th at 9:00 a.m.
Laws and Rules, April 27th at 10:00 a.m.
Recreation Commission, 26th of March, this Thursday.
Easter egg hunt, Easter Sunday at 2:00 p.m.
Don't be late.
Party of Chief's New House, May 31st.
And then I just request as soon as we know anything about the Arbor Day, if I can get notified as well.
Okay, all right. Okay, hearing none, no further business. Motion for adjournment.
Seven.